All right. I'd like to call the regular board meeting to order. All board members except Mr. Meyer and Mr. Mecca are present. I would like to ask Dr. Baylen if you could lead us, please, in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
Please be advised that in the event of a fire emergency, an evacuation should be necessary. An alarm will sound. Please note all marked emergency exits and evacuate well away from the building. At this time, we do request that everyone please turn their cell phones and other electronic devices into their silent mode. Thank you. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the agenda as presented? Mrs. Beeger, is there a second? Mrs. Leatherboro, any discussion? All in favor? Okay, motion carries unanimously. Ah, Dr. Marsloff, we are here for a budget hearing. Would you like to please give us your presentation on such matter?
Sure. Thank you, Ms. Blumey. This evening, we'll be reviewing again the status of our current budget planning process and gaining ideas and answering questions from both the board and from our community. So, starting off with our budget, we certainly have a board goal that relates to the budget in that it upholds the mission and values of our school community. And the district goal, very similar, supports the Williamsville Central School District's education programs. And we feel that where we are in the budget planning process right now certainly does that and relates to both the board and the district goal in that regard. We wanted to, going into the process, prioritize instructional needs and support quality educational programming for all students, remain committed to fiscal responsibility and accountability, and comply with all New York State tax cap requirements whenever we can. So just, again, reviewing some of the historical budget reductions and savings over about seven-year period of over $15 million, and I won't read all these again to the board and to the community, but we have gone over them in detail in past presentations. So with our program continuation, we are seeing an uptick in employee salaries of about 3.6 million; policy services, 117,000; social security, 200,000; health insurance is starting to go up a little bit again at $750,000. And then additional classes for special education students to provide a better continuum of services in our district at 505,000; and student transportation contractual increases of $250,000 for a grand total of $5,422,000. So some of our program support considerations that we have included in the budget so far is adding one district-wide instructional coaching position, enhancing academic intervention services for those students who are in need and need extra support and assistance with their learning. And then at the administration level, we're implementing changes to enhance the administrative makeup at the elementary school and high school levels. That will be part of a three-year shift that takes place to change unit work from one unit to another. And district-wide, we're looking to increase our professional development efforts to the tune of $100,000 for a total expense increase for support programs of 475,000. This puts us at a preliminary budget figure of $192,32,210. And then we must look at our revenue. So our revenue starts with our base budget of just over $186 million; an estimated state aid increase at this time of 1.6 million; a tax levy increase that is below the tax cap at 2.24 percent of just over 2.6 million; a sales tax increase of $50,000 gets us to $190,482,210, which leaves us short. Our expense budget is higher than our revenue budget by about $1.5 million. However, due to the retirements this year and some additional savings from last year's retirements, we are able to close that budget gap of $1,550,000. So what is the preliminary budget saying so far? It's $190,482,210, which is a budget-to-budget increase of 2.34 percent; an estimated tax levy increase of 2.24 percent, which is slightly below the tax cap calculation; and an estimated tax rate increase of 2.24 percent. What does this look like for home assessed at $150,000? The tax increase with basic star subsidy, for example, would increase by just over $43 a year. What have the tax rate and levy changes been over the years? We have sort of been slow and steady in terms of what the increases have been. Our rate increase has been quite low over the years; levy a little bit higher due to some of the growth in the district in terms of new construction and building. And then our budget-to-budget increase has also been generally in the 2 percent or slightly more than 2 percent range. So what does the preliminary budget accomplish? It maintains our current level of academic and extracurricular programming. It is below the state imposed cap. It adds instructional support for students, including academic intervention services, provides professional development for teachers, and adds an additional district-wide instructional coach and strengthens administrative support at the elementary and high school levels. So what happens if we have more state aid come in? There's a lot of discussions going on at the state level right now to finalize the budget, and it would be my recommendation that the board consider some possible safety and security enhancements in this regard. And in this case, those would be staffing positions, for example. Do we want to look at delving into having a dedicated school resource officer or possibly increase our current school liaison officer coverage to cover more hours during the day? A K-12 behavioral specialist, additional mental health staff, certainly additional monitors or other folks that would help monitor what goes on in our schools; and the idea of a director of security that would oversee our physical and emotional safety programs within the district. So these are just some ideas for the board to think about, and certainly not an all-inclusive list. And it's definitely not something that we could fund all of these items if we do receive some more state aid. So moving forward, once we have our state aid finalized, in the next week to two weeks, we'll be able to put together our proposed budget. So it's important that we hear from the board this evening in terms of priorities for what the board would like to do if we do have additional state aid coming into Williamsville, and so that we can craft our proposed budget for adoption for April 10th. Our budget hearing will take place on May 3rd along with our school board candidates' night. And then, of course, May 15th is our annual budget vote and school board election. Questions? Comments? Board.
Anyone? Mrs. Leatherboro.
So reviewing the list of possible safety and security enhancements, I guess I'm thinking more along the line of understanding first what the instructional coach's role would be. In some ways, an instructional coach can provide behavior management coaching as well to teachers, which might help with some of the outbursts that we're seeing. So could someone talk to me a little bit more about what the plan was for that instructional coach, just to help me understand it a little bit better?
Sure. When it comes to the instructional coach, we don't see that as someone that'd be focusing on the behaviors. That would be more along the lines of what the K-12 behavioral specialist job description would entail. And we've had a number of coaches within our district, both in the realm of technology, which you hear about more about next month at our technology presentation, but also we have a person, for example, that's an instructional coach in math, and in particular focuses on the needs of our elementary math teachers. So this particular instructional coach we're looking to add in the budget would be someone in the area of literacy, particularly at the elementary and middle school levels. It would be great to consider actually adding a second instructional coach as well in the budget if we were able to, just because we don't want to spread the person too thin, and we certainly know there are definitely enough needs. In addition, for an instructional coach, we would be conducting training through our Office of Professional Development. And Dr. Baylen, do you want to mention anything about Mr. Knight's training and things of that nature?
We've conceptualized a few levels of training. Our first would be relative to the overall coaching model and pulling in the research that currently exists. Jim Knight is one professional in the area of coaching who's been well-known in this area. Certainly, there are others. But what we would strive to do first and foremost is set the structure in place for what coaching is, define it, the purposes of coaching, how teachers, staff members, and administrators can support the coaching model, the role of the district office in forwarding this initiative. And then from that, moving into how a literacy-based coach can assist teachers and staff, not just with reading and writing. Certainly, you've heard about the units of study, which would definitely be a focus for this particular individual, as we have a number of teachers who have committed to the workshop model, but also across the curriculum. So in science and social studies, and looking at areas across the elementary day, which certainly have many literacy foundations, as we all know. So the person would definitely be a key resource at the district level in providing some classes and courses for staff, but also onsite at the buildings, working directly with the teams or individuals, grade levels, by using a volunteer method. So it would not be something imposed on anyone. Teachers would commit to a partnership of their own volition, and it would be, just like you see many of the options in our professional development plan, it would be one of the key ways in which we would be able to work side by side with students and staff and forward that learning together. So we're already thinking about what that will look like, pulling in, as you may recall, feedback from our work group that we had last year, of which we had a pretty sizable group, almost 25 people, and we had representation from all levels of instruction, including teachers. And so we're using that, too, as a foundation for what this work will look like. But very busy people. The folks that Dr. Marsloff mentioned are in schools every day, so a majority of their time really is spent in the classrooms.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Mrs. Van Sies.
Dr. Marsloff, could you tell us again, currently at this time, do we have one police officer liaison for the school, Paul Alexander, or is there more than one that does the random stops?
No, not exactly. Paul Alexander is sort of our person that we communicate with in most cases with any issues that go on in our schools or any threats or anything we need to investigate and follow-up on. Each school has two to four SLOs, school liaison officers who've had some training, and they check on our schools from time to time. Sometimes it might be once a week; sometimes it might be more than that. It just depends on what's going on in their schedule. We want them to have a physical presence in our schools. We want our students and staff to be used to seeing them there, to build relationships with them, to be able to provide educational opportunities for our students. And so that's what goes on currently. We also have Amherst security professionals, which are Amherst police officers, that are in our schools from 3:00 to 6:00 p.m. each evening at each of our three high schools only. And they provide assistance in security in person for three hours each evening at each high school.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mrs. Beeger, please.
Looking at the security and safety enhancements, this really pertains to personnel. I know we've talked about structural enhancements as well. I'm curious if those kind of enhancements would come not from this budget but from different reserves, maybe like capital project reserves or that kind of thing? How would those projects be funded if we were to look at doing that kind of work?
So we are looking at that separately. It wouldn't be part of the direct budget for the most part. There could be some equipment items or things that we look at purchasing, but you're exactly right. It would be through a capital project. Some of our smart schools funding, we may be able to use some of that to be able to enhance the physical safety of our schools. So, for example, whether it's exterior doors or whether it's windows or whether it's the main entrances to our schools, particularly at the elementary level, and having it set up so that visitors have to go into the main office before they can gain access to the school. Those are just a few examples of things we're looking at right now for consideration into our next steps of the physical facility component of school security.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Dr. McCleary.
I guess I would like to remain optimistic that the governor is going to come through with more money for us. Looking again at the list that's there, two quick questions. Is the K-12 behavioral specialist a new position, a possible new position, or do we already have one and we want to add to it? And can you give a brief description of what you see the director of security possibly doing or those kinds of enhancements for our safety at school?
Sure. So right now, we have people that come in from time to time that we contract with to provide support around student behaviors, classroom management, things of that nature, and provide training to all of our staff members, professional development. This would be a new dedicated position to have someone that's, their full-time job is to do that and provide that type of professional development to all of our teachers and related service providers and enhance what we're doing in that regard. When it comes to a director of security, we really haven't had a great deal of discussion about that, but the idea there is to be able to provide a go-between between the district and the Amherst Police Department, which we have now, but to also provide someone to provide more direct oversight and working with principals when it comes to things around emotional security, whether it's things like sources of strength and suicide prevention, whether it's mindfulness and social-emotional learning, whatever it might be for each school to provide a greater level of more direct support for all of our principals and school communities in that regard. But by the same, at the same time, someone who becomes an expert in making sure our buildings are as safe as they can be in terms of school security, in terms of locked-door protocols, in terms of evacuations and lockdowns and all the different things that take place in our schools. So some of those are just examples of possible assignments for such a position.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Dr. Renado.
You can do it first, though?
No, please.
Actually, I have three questions. I'll start with the first. Certainly, I think last spring and fall, and perhaps through the survey we ran, class size was an issue that seemed to resonate with a lot of our constituents in the community. Do we believe that we have the appropriate funding to meet our targets and our expected class-size guidelines, in particular in the elementary schools with this budget?
We do. And that's, I'm glad you brought that up, because we have had conversations with our principals about the possibility of reducing class size further, particularly at the elementary level, and we are running out of real estate is our problem at the elementary level more than it's an issue of having additional teachers. There's only so many classrooms as you begin to divide them. As we have over the last three years, you end up with not having enough classroom space unless you're going to do a capital project or perhaps consider, like, temporary classroom space, but we haven't gone to that yet.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Should we go down the list?
All right. So you actually helped touch on it, thankfully, with the possible enhancements. Potentially, it may be covered under the additional mental health staff, but a similar-themed question, as will be the next one as well. Do we think we have the appropriate funding to be as strong as we want to be in the following three areas: anti-bullying programs, anti-drug and E-CIG programs, and mental health programs?
Do we think we have enough funding?
Yes.
The answer to that question would be no. We, I don't think we'll ever have enough funding for those three areas. It's just, it's critical. All of those areas are something that we're always looking to pay more attention to, but we, of course, have to balance that with all of our other needs, whether it be instructional needs, class sizes, facility needs, extracurriculars and athletics and arts and music. So no, we would like to do more in all three of those areas in the future, for sure.
Could there be consideration that in addition to that mental health staff component, perhaps if we do receive additional funding, we can open that maybe broader in terms of functionality to, as you mentioned earlier, mindfulness, social-emotional learning, and maybe even some aspect to enhance our anti-bullying or anti-drug use programs?
Sure, absolutely.
Great. Last question, then. Very similar theme. Obviously, we always want more. I'm very biased, as you can tell, when it comes to the sciences. We obviously want to be not just good but great in Williamsville, in particular, in the area of sciences. You know, do we think we have enough funding to be as strong as we need to be when it comes to sciences in terms of laboratories, microscopes, and things of that nature?
I do. I can answer that in the affirmative. We've actually added some science courses over the last couple of years for, in particular, our high school students, our class sizes. We reviewed those over the last few weeks for each of our science courses, for all of our courses, really, across the district, and we are in a, in good position there.
All right, excellent. Thank you for the informative presentation.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Mrs. Leatherboro, please.
So, Dr. Marsloff, if I'm understanding correctly, you asked us to prioritize these items? Is that correct?
Well, these are just some ideas, some considerations, and what I'd like to get a sense of from the board so that there are no surprises on April 10th is what sort of general direction would the board like to go in when it comes to if we receive some additional funding from New York State? Another option, for example, would be to say, for the board to say, "We don't want to do anything extra or anything more. We're going to put those dollars to the side, so to speak, and use them when we do next year's budget process." So if the state said, for example, "We're going to give you another $250,000 in state aid," you could say, "Well, rather than hire a school resource officer and maybe add a social worker," or whatever the case may be, you could say, "No, don't do anything with that $250,000. Now, we'll start off next year's budget process," sort of $250,000 ahead of the game, so to speak. That's another option. I just am trying to get a sense, some consensus, if you will, of where the board is with this, where they would like to see the district place its resources if we do receive additional funding from New York State.
Okay, thank you for that. That helps me a lot. With that, my personal pick would be to add more mental health staff, if those were my choices. However, I'm not working in the district. I'm trusting the leadership team. So I'd be interested in hearing a case for why one of those items might be more beneficial than the other, only because, looking at our timeline, we don't, you know, it says more stated, question mark, question mark. So we don't know if this will even be a possibility, but thinking positive. If it is, our timeline is to approve a budget in April, so that just gives us a few weeks. I would be interested in knowing what your recommendation would be if only one of those were an option.
So this is going to sound like I'm trying to be evasive, and I'm really not. They're all important. When we talked to our PTSA council, for example, last night, everybody wanted some of something. Everybody wanted a school resource officer. Everyone wanted more mental health staff. Everyone wanted more secure schools, so it's sort of all goes into, it's like a recipe, you know? Is the sugar most important to make the cookies or the flour? Or is it the chocolate chips? And these are the different parts of making the cookies. We have to determine, is there one that we wanted, just add another, a little extra dash of it into our recipe, so to speak? And so to pick one over another is challenging. We could certainly do it. We've had conversations with our principals, and we've had conversations with the leadership team, and we can certainly make those recommendations at the next board meeting when we present the budget for adoption. But we'd also like some feedback on what the board sees as being most critical as well.
Thank you. My personal feedback, just being one of nine, is that we have a strong foundation here in Williamsville with our leadership team and our central office staff. So with that, if there were available money, I would want to see it go to individuals that are directly impacting students on a daily basis. So I would prefer it to go to mental health staff because we already have such a strong foundation at the top. That's my opinion.
Thank you.
Mrs. Beeger?
Looking at, pardon me, looking at those four options, I'm looking at the director of security versus the school resource officers. You mentioned tonight that each school has two to four SLOs. I remember the presentation a couple of weeks ago, they said there's roughly 25, you know, altogether. I like the idea of a director of security because I think that there is a lot to be said for organization, communication, those kinds of structures, I think, really enhance safety and just process in general. And so I like that idea of having someone really being in charge, making sure there's consistency across the buildings, making sure that, like you said, it may be not even just the security, like managing the work with the Amherst Police, but oversight with principals, working with mental health issues and not just, you know, police issues. I think that that's a really interesting idea, and if we do get more stated, I'd be curious to see perhaps a more comprehensive job description for that role. I think that could be something that could really enhance what we currently have in place. I like that. I wanted to ask a question, too, and part of it is because I'm just not sure. I've heard rumors of possible legislation, you know, people are talking about mental health in schools. It's a real hot topic right now, and safety and that kind of thing. I haven't heard of anything that's been formally introduced and passed, but I've had discussions about it. I've read snippets of people wanting to organize those kinds of things. So I'm curious if you've heard or if there's talk of, perhaps down the line, there being, just how we have, you know, the smart schools to help with certain things, if maybe there's talk of something coming down the road that might provide more funding in this arena.
When it comes to this arena, I think there's been some proposals for additional state aid for things like security improvements to buildings, like your building aid plus 10 more percent of the cost, things of that nature. There's been some proposals to fund school resource officers in schools, but that would be on a grant basis, and whenever you hear the word "grant," that sounds like a nice thing. But be careful because you get used to employing a person through the grant, and then the grant money goes away, and you're trying to continue that, and that becomes a challenge. You have to have a sustainability plan built in. Those are the items I've mainly heard about as of now, but that doesn't mean there couldn't be more that we're just not aware of or haven't heard of.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, Dr. McCleary, what do you have to say?
I am in favor of using this potential money as opposed to saving it, because I think it would be beneficial to start some things in place that could move forward. I think of those choices, it's similar to what Mrs. Beeger was saying, that I think I would, if we had to pick, the director of safety, the security, because that person could then theoretically find ways to tweak things and do different tasks so that some of the other things then perhaps become available or find ways to bring in some of the other resources.
Thank you.
Mrs. Van Sies.
Dr. Marsloff, you're going to get all sorts of different feedback now going every other direction. I'm very comfortable knowing with the school resource officers that we Um, I'm, I'm very comfortable knowing with the school resource officers that we have now that we definitely know that there's two to four at each building on a random basis. And then all three high schools having a three to six. Um, just speaking from experience, I come from a school the same size as Will North. And we have three officers, two retired, one that's an actual working officer. My school is no more safer than Williamsville North High School. So are we paying a whole lot more? Yes. But I don't feel that we're any more protected than a, um, you know, school resource officer that's on a random basis. What I am actually interested in is the K to 12 behavioral specialist. That is something that a lot of school districts are currently implementing into their budgets because a behavioral specialist can target on so many areas. So for each school, they can go in and start implementing strategies, interventions, different programs that the teachers and the administration should be using. Um, the state's coming down hard on us. We are not, um, we're frowned upon when we suspend. Um, even, you know, they're tracking everything, ISS, all of that. So there are always ways that we have to improve with that. We've got disproportionality that many schools are facing. Um, so there's different things that have to be done with even the faculty, like sensitivity training, restorative practices. There's a lot going on where clientele is changing with our schools. Our students are facing different things. So to have a expert that's a behavioral specialist that can give the different tips and interventions and strategies to administration and staff right in-house, I think is so beneficial. And it will also, um, flow into anti-bullying, the anti-drug use as well as the mental health. I would love to see more mental health. My worry is, how do you disperse that throughout a school district of this size? So you're not, you know, we can't just hire one or two mental health staff. We have many schools. So how do you pick which school that that would happen at? Whereas a K to 12 behavioral specialist can be utilized and go right towards the students, which is our main focus.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Dr. Banater?
So, uh, can you refresh my memory on where we stand with respect to the potential capital project as it relates to, um, music improvements in the district?
Sure. Uh, that's been under discussion for more than a year now, probably more than two years. Um, we intend to have an update for the board that are most likely at our May or June meeting. Um, that will provide more details on where we are with that. As we would be looking to put forward a referendum, most likely in December of 2018.
Great, thank you. And then that's gonna build off the, the next question that was actually prompted by your answer earlier around class size. So you may see where I'm going with this. Um, to what extent should we be concerned as a board and as a district? Um, if we're starting to have problems with real estate in the critical years of elementary school with class sizes that may require capital investment, do we need to look at that projection? And to make sure we're not putting funds potentially against music, which I would love to do, um, and is very near and dear to my heart, I just want to make sure that we have enough classroom size to appropriately meet the needs and the guidelines, not only the students in elementary school, but also the teachers.
You could do that. That could be, uh, an area of focus. However, I don't know that we would get aided on a project like that. Because when the state looks at what we're building or wanna build and they have to approve it before we can go forward, they wanna know there's a definitive need. And they might not recognize a school board's desire to reduce class sizes as a definitive need uh, in a district to be able to fund, for example, a new, I'll just make this up, six classroom wing in each of our elementary schools.
Sure.
Um, to give one additional classroom to each grade level so that class size can go down. I don't know that they would, that they would aid us on that project. That would probably come all out of local funding uh, from the district, which could prove budgetarily problematic.
Right. I would imagine. Okay. Thank you. Yeah, I'd imagine there are different funding parameters. So just for my, my edification, if we were able to show that due to lack of attrition and increased enrollment in our elementary schools, we are exceeding the official guidelines, is that a trigger? So it's not just that we're looking for ideal class sizes. Let's say if it's, you know, 20 to 25 and we're sitting there at 24 and we want it at 20. Instead, we're now finding ourselves in elementary schools up to 28 and 30, you know, exceeding significantly. Would that be a trigger?
It wouldn't be exceeding the guidelines because the guidelines are quite frankly arbitrary and are established by the board. Um, would, it would be as if you had an increase in overall enrollment going on in the district. So, for example, if enrollment went up 5% next year at the elementary level and 7% the next year and the school itself, the classrooms were getting crowded, then the state might say, well, it makes sense to look at a longer-term capital project. Um, when we do our enrollment report each November for the board, um, it seems to indicate that we're gonna have rather stable enrollment, um, uh, at least for the next five years. So so a report like that would give the district credence to say, okay, this is why it makes sense to add on at our schools, um, to, to build new, uh, classrooms at each of our schools so that we can control this, uh, growing problem.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions, comments? Mrs. Latherbar?
Under the program support considerations with the changes of, um, adding assistant principals at the, at the elementary schools, how does that impact the, um, behavior issues and the need for the K to 12 specialist? I'm just thinking, my experience as by assistant principals typically spend a good part of their day dealing with behaviors. So since that's already sort of tentative item in the budget, does that help that area at all?
I think it could. I mean, just anecdotally, um, as you mentioned, when you have an assistant principal dealing with uh, student behavior, then that, that's a good thing. I think it's also a positive step for school safety. We have a number of times when our principals are out of the building for meetings or professional development or conferences or whatever the case may be. And it's good to have, um, a fully certified, um, administrator who is in charge of the building in their absence. I think that helps with safety, helps address behavior, helps address, um, uh, potentially problematic things that can come up. If a parent, for example, visits a school and is upset about something, whatever the case may be, you have someone to help de-escalate situations.
Okay. I, I'm, I'm in agreement with this because, you know, we've got all of our program support considerations pretty much going to, um, academic enhancement, but that's what we're here for, right? We're, we're a learning institution. So I, I support that. And, and I support having, if there's additional funds, have it going to something directed towards safety and wellness. Because regardless of how much PD you've, you've received and you could have the best possible lesson plan, if you can't teach it because of X, Y, and Z sitting in front of you, it does, it does you no good. So, um, I think we're on the right track. I, I support what's in front of us. Um, and I definitely agree with Dr. McClary. If we have extra money, I say spend it because very often it's not there. The next time you go looking for it. So I would say spend it. And, and still at my vote would still be to have it be more boots on the ground with mental health staff. That's just my two cents.
Thank you.
Mrs. Vasquez?
Yes. Uh, I'm in agreement with, uh, Mrs. Van Seis regarding the K-12 behavioral specialist need. But I wanna take that one step further because if we're trying to effectively combat like disparities and, and, you know, suspension and expulsion and classification, et cetera rates, then we really need to take that step, take that leap and really use these funds toward minority recruitment. So I would really like to see us, you know, we, we talked about it before at this table and, and other settings. I really would like to see us really move forward on actively recruiting minority staff, teachers, administrators for this district, school board members per this district. We really need to, you know, look a little differently. It's important. Our, our student body is looking that way, but our staff and our board does not.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Wow, I can get mine in now.
Just gonna say no.
Dr. Matzoff, can you, uh, explain to us, please, the difference between an SLO officer and an SRO officer as regards to, uh, both fiscal impact and what a, a, a job responsibility would enlighten or entail, please?
Sure. A school resource officer would be a full-time police officer assigned to either the district or a school or a group of schools or whatever the case may be. An SLO, school liaison officer generally is someone who's a police officer that checks on our schools on a random basis and does not have a cost, um, affiliated with it unless you were to say, for example, we have three to six PM officers covering our three high schools. We would like to increase that to be seven AM to 10 AM at all of our high schools as well. There would be a cost to that. Um, but as it stands currently, our SLOs do not cost the district money. Um, it's an in-kind service provided by the Amherst Police Department to help build relationships and to help, um, make sure our, our schools are as secure as they can be.
Okay, thank you. Um, to answer your, your question that all my colleagues here have answered, um, based on the feedback I've heard from, from various meetings, uh, and you've sat through some of those with me, um, I, I think it's kind of a mixed result. I, I think we'd like to see some, uh, maybe increase of SLO, which is free. Uh, I don't know how we would do that one though, but maybe a, an SRO that's random. I, again, I don't know, um, the feasibility behind that. I, I know that we've heard a lot of parents, uh, I think we had one unit at last night's PTSA council meeting that specifically said they don't want to see an increase of police presence, but I think all the rest of the units said that they'd like to see some form of an increase. Uh, I think the underlying theme, uh, from full-time was not the, the, uh, the majority. It sounded more like a, a random approach where more presence but on a random, um, basis would, would seem more to it. So I don't know if we could do that with, uh, asking for increased SLO coverage, which sounds like wouldn't be a budgetary impact. Um, but I'm gonna guess it probably would still. The mental health, I am gonna come back to that one. I've looked at, uh, statistics over, over the last several months. I, I see our, in our own schools, what our staffing levels are. Um, and what I do see, um, probably specifically more at the elementary schools is that we don't have the resources that we do at the middle schools or high schools. So if, if more funds are available, I'd like to see us put more into the mental health staff, um, or to, uh, Mrs. Van Seis's, uh, comments regarding the K-12 behavior specialist. As long as it was targeted more in the elementary. Um, I mean, I'm looking at our elementaries. We have one full-time psychologist and one full-time social worker. We have no counselors at the elementary level. Um, obviously it would be nice to have counselors at all the schools, put more social workers at all the schools. I realize that's a substantial budgetary impact. But if we could put, say, two counselors that roam three schools each, you know, that covers, uh, three elementaries.
Yeah, just to remind the board, three years ago, we only had half-time school psychologists at our elementary. We did add it through the budget process, one and a half positions. So we had a full-time person. I just wanna make sure everyone knew that.
Yep. No, I, I, I remember that and I, I appreciated it. Um, but I think a lot of the sta- stats that have come out, statistics, and I know statistics can be spun just about any way you wanna make it. It's marketing 101. Um, they, they all show that if we can put more into mental education, mental health, uh, preventative measures specifically, which is kinda where I like the K-12 behavior specialist as well, coming into play on that. Uh, the more we can do, especially at the younger grade levels. Um, and on that note too, I'm pulling up your, your presentation from our board meeting, uh, the security presentation. And one idea here that I really jumped out at me that, uh, goes along with wellness programs, along with the mental health and the K-12 behavior specialist, was that comment you had here of enhancing emotional supports, connect students to a meaningful adult-led activity. That screams to me. And, and prior to even seeing that presentation last month, I was already thinking, we've gotta do more in the elementary. We've gotta do more at the elementary. That's where the problem starts. It festers in the elementary and it, it, it goes up into the middle and gets worse and continues to progress. So my vote, um, i- is a mixture of, of the three. I'd like to see the director of security, but I'd like to see more information on that and, and, uh, job duties of that and, and budgetary impacts, uh, longevity of something like that as well. So maybe that's something we look at for, for the next budget season, uh, at least in my opinion. So.
Thank you.
Thanks. That being said, I would like to open it up to the public. The podium is now available for you to come up and have a, uh, question and answer with the board. We do ask that you please keep it related to budgetary, uh, questions. Uh, so if anybody would like to address the board, please come up to the podium now, sign in, and then please state your name and address and then your question. Please.
Hi, my name's Rob Myers. Um, full disclosure, my wife is Melanie Myers, one of the assistant, uh, administrative assistants at Dodge Elementary. Um, I see the budget. I know that there's a change happening and she's well aware of it, uh, for the, uh, the administrative assistants at, at the schools. Dr. Matzoff, you've said a couple of times that the reason for this change is so that there's a person with certifications uh, that can take over many of these. I think all of the people in this position at all six elementary schools do have those certifications, as far as I understand. So what my first question would be, uh, why isn't that good enough? And secondly, what's, uh, where in this budget is it that's, uh, in place for taking care of the people who are currently in these roles? And what's the, uh, path for them going forward?
Well, I think, you know, I'll try to address some of your questions, but I can't address all of it because it's something that impacts a specific individual, in this case, your spouse. So that is a little bit private and not something I would wanna put out there here. Um, when it comes to certi- administrative certifications, um, not all of our administrative assistants have administrative certification at this time. That's one issue. Second issue is they're only part-time administrators. They're currently up, uh, above a point five as a teacher. That's one of the items that's driving the fact that they don't have administrative certification. Because if they're not more than a point five administrator, then they don't, um, qualify, uh, for certification in New York State. So it's a double-edged sword. By the same token, if I'm an individual who's an assistant administrator, I don't necessarily want to be a point six administrator, point four teacher, because now I'm going to build seniority in an administrative tenure area. And when you build seniority in administrative tenure area, that's great. But, you know, five years from now, it's, we're having significant financial issues and budget cuts. Which positions might get looked at for possible reduction? A part-time administrator would possibly be that. Um, when it comes to potential options for people that are in those positions, they can certainly apply for the administrative position. If they choose not to or are not selected, the other option is to be a classroom teacher in that school or also an AIS teacher in the school. If you notice, our academic intervention services that are being budgeted in, in this preliminary budget provides for more academic intervention services and that would be an example of that.
So it is being covered in the budget?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other questions from the community? With that being said, I thank everybody. Appreciate the budget presentation from, uh, the administrative and, uh, staff, the assistant administrators, uh, superintendents and all. Again, well done. Thank you very much. I know a lot of time and effort goes into this, uh, from all of you. So, uh, you and your teams, it's not one person. So thank you again. Would someone like to make a motion to adjourn the budget work session? Uh, Mrs. Va- Vasquez, is there a second? Dr. Banater, thank you. All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, and our next board meeting will be on April the 10th.